All right, let's start. I'd like to call the Village Board meeting of June 13th, 2019. Ally, will you listen to the pledge?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we get into the public comment, I just wanted to let everyone know that obviously, most of you are aware that Daryl had a stroke maybe a month ago. Well, he is back in the hospital and it looks like he's gonna be having a double bypass surgery, so they found two of his main arteries that are pre-clot. So just wanna wish him best of luck in some pretty good news, so I appreciate that. So we do have a public hearing, which we'll do at 7:15, so we can jump into public comments. If anyone has a comment, please come onto the podium, just state your name and address.
Evening. My name is William Staya, and I've resided at 121 Fuller Avenue of the Village since 1991. Since late 2017, an assessment of the Village of Webster, the town of Webster Sewer's Treatment Facilities, has been undertaken. A number of interested Village residents like yourself have been following details of activity since then. While there have been reports in press that this process has still not reached conclusions, and that to the best of our knowledge, public hearings on the outcomes, recommendations from both the town and the village have occurred, this topic is still a critical one in our minds that we need to be hearing some feedback from the Village as to the direction that you're headed in some of the findings. On May 27th, I forwarded to Mayor Byers a series of questions on this topic. My neighbor Larry Maggio followed up with the Village's offices and was told that Mr. Byers was out of town, and that we should contact Jerry Belito, the deputy mayor, in the mayor's absence. Larry followed up, and we've been unable to arrange a meeting with the mayor and the deputy mayor. So we're bringing these questions to this Village Board meeting in hopes of getting some answers. First, what is the status of the joint study that the Village and the Town commissioned to look into the cost of one sewage treatment plant in Webster, or the costs of maintaining two separate sewage treatment facilities? When will the public be made aware of the results of the study? Because the town has already begun to proceed with upgrades to their plant. The Village currently has a study that shows the Village's sewage treatment plant needs a total of $5 million in upgrades. Is that a true number, or is the number higher? If it's higher, what is the number? Did the joint study address the cost required by the Village to upgrade this plant? And if so, what was that number of costs? If the two sewage treatment plants are consolidated into one, is there an advantage from a grant standpoint to reduce the cost for the unrate payers? Seems that New York State awards larger grants for consolidation versus non-consolidation. And how long will this grant program be in existence? Why are the Village taxpayers paying two engineering firms for essentially the same study? The town and the Village hired an engineering firm to conduct a study to look into the feasibility of having a regional sewage treatment plant, and the Village is paying another engineering firm to evaluate the findings? Why? Will the Village Board seek public input prior to making a decision on whether or not they will consolidate the sewage treatment plant into one plant? The Webster Herald's March 27th issue contained 2019, '20 general and sewer fund budgets. Line number GG9710.600 shows an $86,505 payment for a serial bond principal, a new bond, $5 million. When was this bond issued? We don't recall hearing anything about this in the news. If the bond wasn't issued, how can the $86,505 be included in the sewer fund budget? Is that proper accounting? The sewer fund budget also notates a $20,000 inter-fund payment and a $5,400 inter-fund loan payment. What is the total amount owed by the sewer fund to the general fund? And when was this debt incurred, and for what reason? There has been much speculation about Xerox and specifically its plans for facilities in Webster. It's my understanding that Xerox currently uses over 50% of the capacity of the Village of Webster's sewage treatment plant. So what is the impact if Xerox vacates the Webster campus, and specifically what the impact would be on Village residents of maintaining a separate facility? I hope to receive responses to these questions, which the mayor and the deputy mayor have, preferably in a public forum, so that the entire community can be advised on the status of evaluations and recommendations. Thank you.
Thank you.
Would you type mine up? I just ordered a Carole's pizza. I'm not kidding you. Ask Carole. I'm not kidding. I love Carole. I love you guys too. My name is Larry Maggio. I live at 204 London Road. And I can't do it the way Bill does it. I'm gonna give you how many years I've been here. Fifty-five. Fifty-five years, 30 of them in the Village of Webster. So my heart and soul is in this Village just as much as every one of you on this board, every one of you. And I have a lot of respect for everything you do. For a lot of you, this is a part-time job. You don't get paid enough. Why, Judy, you're going back up there? God love you, all right? It's a thankless job. I'm past president of WEVO, the Webster Athletic Booster Organization. I'm current president of APIC Rochester, a nonprofit supply chain management cash-flow educational society that teaches local businesses how to manage cash. You're not doing it very well. In this particular instance, we think there's a problem that we want to bring to your attention. Jerry, I know you tried, okay? And if I were in your shoes, you did exactly the thing I needed you to do. But I warned you. So I want to welcome Gino Finelli from the Rochester Business Journal, because this is gonna hit the papers. And I didn't want to do it this way. In fact, I argued against it. And the reason I argued against it is because I don't want to be seen as the town that goes yak 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 against a village or a town. We're not those kind of people. We're the Webster residents. And it's time this group starts treating us with the same respect that the Webster Central School District taught me. It's their fault time this way. The care program is cooperation, it's accountability, it's respect, and it's excellence. You missed the first three. You didn't listen to us. So now, Bill's done a great job. I'll still go on record and say, I don't know if it should be consolidated or not, but I'll say the same thing I said up here, God, what was it, almost a year ago, I think? I think a sixth grader might figure this one out. You definitely want to consolidate. Let's go back to cash flow management. It's two pieces of information, folks. It's not hard. It's revenue and expense. So let's recap. Bill, what did he say? Revenues going down. Xerox is heading out. If we go with one plant in the Village, guess what's gonna happen? There's gonna be no revenues. I'll scratch that one for a second. So revenues, we're gonna lose it from Xerox, and then it's on the burden of us. If we keep going down the path that we're going, and the reason that we're up here today and not before is because of the published budget. That preliminary budget scared us into wanting more information. So you know something we don't know. So it's time to trust us to help you, because I trust each and every one of these people that are sitting there. And believe it or not, as much as I'm ticked off at Daryl, and I am ticked off that he doesn't answer one phone call, one email, it's unprofessional. All you have to do is talk with us, and we're very, very willing to learn. And that's what we want to do, is we want to learn and do the right thing. So let us help you, please. And oh, by the way, I skipped everything I wrote down here, but I will tell you this. This town is where life is worth living. You built it. Let's maintain it. Keep doing what you're doing. I have a little camp out in Fair Haven, and I go through some towns that used to be bustling. And let me tell you, you come into Webster, we pay no attention to how nice we have it until we go east a little bit. And then we come back here, let me tell you, you're doing everything right. Let's not make a big deal about this, other than I will make a big deal, because I warned you. I mean, I deserve some more respect. I don't take that kind of lack of response from my wife, my kids, my dog, or Daryl. So let's please just work with us. Thank you.
I don't know, and I don't know when you started trying to connect with Daryl, but he-
It's been about a year, sir.
Okay.
And he's not answered one. And I call, and I leave messages, and they don't-
I just want to make sure it was any time recently, because he's had some pretty good health-
No, sir. And quite honestly, I feel bad about that too, right? I feel bad about Daryl and all the rest, and I hope the best for him. But notwithstanding, we do deserve a little respect. And I do want to say something about Peter Elder too. He's instrumental to the building of this Village as well. So everybody, I don't care where, I don't care where you are, how integrated you are in this town, everybody in here is important. And there's nobody that doesn't belong here. And I'm not talking about anybody behind their back. I just want people to help us understand, because we still don't understand. So give us 30 minutes. Thank you.
Thanks, Larry.
Well, following that, my little thing is a little insignificant, I think. Hi, I'm Mrs. Rosenberry. I live at 16 Fuller Avenue. You may recall, about a month ago, I came here and said I'd like to put up a survey in anticipation of the installation of four new bike racks in the Village. I did that, and it was about a month ago, I put that survey up on my blog, and I asked respondents to choose from nine different locations. You'll see on the fancy pants, visual aid in front of you, those nine locations are in front of Village Hall, in front of Barry's Old School Irish, or the Rug Sale Store, in front of Smith's Insurance, in that natural area next to Smith Insurance, in front of the Webster Museum, in front of the Harmony House, down in the parking lot near Village Bakery, which was kind of a throwaway for me. My husband and I were saying, hmm, maybe someone will want one down there. Veterans Park, and somewhere north of 104, and I gave them an opportunity to say where they thought north of 104. Couple of people put up Webster Park. Hmm, I don't think we want it that far north, but yeah. So I asked everyone to choose up to three options for each of the two designs of the bike racks. I received 49 responses in the last month, and I summarized them on the charts on the back. And you can see that there are a couple of favorites. For the Village of Webster logo, the three most popular choices were Veterans Park, in front of Barry's, and at Village Hall.
How many times did you vote for Barry's?
Actually, I did not vote at all, but every time I put this up on my blog and I tweeted it, Danny and Jessica retweeted it.
They did.
Yeah, they did. Every single time. The top two choices for the bike rack with the bike logo on it were tied between Barry's and the Village Bakery parking lot, with Veterans Park coming in third. People did have a chance to add other suggestions, but I got very few of those. But those are indicated if they did that. So obviously, the board is gonna have the final decision on where these bike racks will be installed. But I hope that this information might help guide that decision, so at least you get an idea of what people are thinking, where they really might like to see them. And I'm sure I speak for all the people who took this survey, or anybody who cycles into the Village, that we hope to see the racks installed as soon as possible. Are there any questions?
It's me. May I put two with Barry's?
No, no, it's okay. If you just put one there, Jake, that'd be all right. I'll make sure I'll talk to Danny and Jess about it, and they'll be cool with it.
Yeah, I really appreciate all your effort. That helps us. It really helps us.
I just hope we can see them sometime this summer.
We're working on it.
All right, thank you. Thanks very much.
Anyone else? All right, there's no one else. I just wanted to comment real quick about the comments earlier about the sewer treatment plant. So I'll tell you, we have been working hard. It's taken a while, because people, we want to make sure we're comparing apples to apples, making sure the numbers are right. And it's been a lot of back and forth between the engineers. Jake's done a lot of work on this stuff. It's not that we're not trying to be transparent. The town and the Village are very committed to letting the public know, and hear, and see, and listen, and have an opportunity to speak to it. And I know this board will stand by that. That's what we want to do. I know the workshop tonight in the town of Webster, they are discussing this as well. I met with them last week just to say, hey, from a Village standpoint, from the board of the Village of Webster, we did talk about that we are obviously one community, and we want to partner and work together well. And these are the things that we would be concerned about. And we laid those out and giving them opportunities to answer those. But giving it out too early, giving out numbers that aren't real, just concerned me. So I think we're close, and you guys should see something. And Larry, I felt that, I'm sorry you were ignored. I think I tried to, I responded to you as soon as I can. Daryl said he wanted to be a part of it, so I just tried to stall it just for a week till he got back, and then this happened. So I had all intentions of meeting with you and Daryl, and I honored he wanted to be a part of that conversation. So I'm sorry that I had to come to this, because I thought we were communicating. But enough said, and we'll have more information hopefully soon.
Well, we thought by the end of June that we would have enough information. So, and I mean, we've all been working on it. It's not like somebody is just sitting here ignoring it for that.
And there has been conversations in the public meetings, workshops. We talked about where we are in certain steps. So it's not like it's not been transparent at all. But obviously, you want more information, I understand.
Perception, right?
Yep.
Yeah, we know.
You know by the end of the month, did you say, or?
We hope to know. We hope to have some stuff soon, yes. I don't want to put a date to it, so Larry, it might be from-
Listen, I also want to say, I don't come to a lot of these meetings. Whenever I have free time, I would like to relax sometimes. So, you know, if you want to wait until September, I'm okay with that. But as long as we have, as long as we know, just let us know. Give us an expectation, but when we don't know anything, then we just drive ourselves crazy. And I did a good job of that tonight, didn't I?
We are live on Facebook as well, if you ever want to watch it from the couch.
Oh, great.
There you go.
All right, does anyone else have any public comments? So we'll close that portion of the meeting. I think we need to open up the public hearing. This is on Proposal of Law Number One of 2019. This is general, has specific requirements for wireless communication facilities. So if anyone has a comment to that, feel free to come up and speak.
Good evening, trustees.
Excuse me, I gotta take a motion to go over to the public hearing. So I'll ask for a motion to go into public hearing. I'm sorry. All in favor?
Aye.
Sorry for that.
Okay.
No problem. Thank you. Trustees, my name is Mark Kuhn. I am a regulatory manager with Verizon Wireless, upstate New York network manager. And for what it's worth, born and raised in the Village of Webster. And I was a student of Mayor Byers too, so I appreciate the update, and I'll keep them in my prayers. I have, if you don't mind, I have some information. Thank you. Yeah, just some information on what small cells are and why we're looking to deploy them, if that helps. We really appreciate, Verizon really appreciates the fact that you're taking on this initiative of updating your telecommunications code to include small cells. They're a very integral part of how we deal with much-needed data capacity relief in our networks. We're experiencing a 50% growth rate in data use on a network year over year. Because, you know, these things aren't, they aren't phones anymore. The phone is an app that's on your handheld wireless device. So people are using them for more and more ways of managing their lives, and, you know, online banking, ride-sharing, all kinds of things. So. And especially in residential areas too. Half of all households are now wireless only, which is especially important for, you know, 911 situations. This year, wireless devices are gonna surpass television as the primary form of in-home entertainment. So you can imagine the, you know, the data crunch that that's putting on our network. Families aren't gathering around the television anymore. Everybody, you know, you've got five wireless devices all streaming different data sessions in the home. So just a little information on why small cells are so important to us. You may recall that my colleague, Tom Greiner from Nixon Peabody, was here at your meeting back in February. And I think he had a very constructive conversation at that time. Tom submitted some written comments, and I want to thank the Village, because a lot of those comments were addressed and are reflected in the latest version of the ordinance. We requested a workshop with the Village, and were advised to come here to the public hearing tonight for any remaining comments that we have, so that's why I'm here. So I just want to highlight a few key items that we would still like to see addressed. First, it's a bit confusing how small cells attached to existing or replacement utility poles would be handled. We had asked that small cells, meaning the federal definition of a wireless, a small wireless facility be handled, let me back up. Small cells defined as a small wireless facility under the federal law be handled as a permitted use. In other words, administrative review for a building permit, as opposed to going through a special use permit procedure. It appears that you might have tried to address this in Section 2C4 by saying, "A small wireless communication facility shall first obtain a building permit." But the way the draft defines substantial changes, the typical small cell is still gonna need to go through that special permit process. Just as an example, if you've seen the small cell that we installed just recently at the corner of Sanford and Corning Park, a new 40-foot-tall pole was installed to replace the previous 35-foot-tall pole. And that's very common, especially on RGE poles. A pole that's five feet taller needs to be installed to accommodate the intended space. But, so just going from 35 feet to 40 feet, that's more than a 10% increase in pipe, which would kick it into the substantial increase category. So, you know, again, we respectfully request that, at least on existing or replacement utility poles, if it meets the federal definition of a small cell, that it be handled under administrative process. Also, new poles in the right-of-way actually fall under the definition of a new tower, and, which doesn't seem relevant. We think that would frustrate the purposes of the federal small cell regulations. And then there's the prohibition on new poles in the right-of-way where there are no above-ground utilities. And I understand what you're trying to do there, but we think that a prohibition on telecommunications services could put the Village in a bad spot when it comes to that federal law. So we request that you at least add a provision for a waiver for certain things like setbacks and new poles. So I'd like to ask one more time, before you adopt this, we request the opportunity to get together in like some sort of a working session with whoever the main policy decision-makers are, and maybe we can give you some examples of, you know, like example proposals of installations and how they would fit under the code that you proposed. So I'd be glad to take any questions that you have for me, anything that you want to know about Verizon and small cells.
I have a question for you. I'm a retired outside flying engineer for Martin's Big Alphabets. I'm very aware of the telephone and RGE pole locations in our Village. There's, right now, what's out there is two poles, one right next to the other one, all over the Village.
Oh, the double poles that haven't been removed.
Yeah. And it's quite an effort for me to get back with my old cronies to get these things removed, because it's in their maintenance budget, and they don't like to spend a lot of money on maintenance. And so the pole that's left standing there is referred to as LPO, Last Person Off Takes the Pole Out. That's not happening either. So now I can visualize a 40-foot pole in the backyards next to two other ones. And so I'm all in favor of 5G service and all that, but I am not in favor of any further telephone destruction.
So, yeah, like you said, the last attacher, the lowest attacher on the pole has the obligation to remove that pole.
The last person off. So if the telephone gets off and RGE is left, they transfer their material, then they pull the pole out. What's happening is now, what we have right now is, one or the other is still attached. And knowing this from my career, those things sat on my desk for a long period of time, because they weren't that important. And I can assure you that that's what's happening right now with the telephone and RGE engineering departments.
So any pole that we've done, that I'm aware of in upstate New York, electric is always the first make-ready participant. So they'll set the pole, move the power lines, and then it goes from top to bottom, as you know. So typically, the ILEC, the commercial phone companies, the last moves, and they would remove the pole.
We also have cable TV and stuff.
What I have seen, the Public Service Commission has come out with what they call a one-touch make-ready, where now all that communication space, the moves in the communication space could all be done by one contractor, which I think is a great solution. Another thing that other municipalities have done, they make it incumbent upon us to make sure that that double wood is removed. So we wouldn't be opposed to you making that a condition of the building permit, that we don't get our final, like, write-off on the, you probably have some sort of, or Jake, you might know, some sort of final inspection, perhaps? That would be a condition of the permit?
Yes, yeah, typically it's such a thing.
So if that's a concern, that's one of the things that we've seen other municipalities do, is make that a condition of the permit, the removal of this old pole.
So you would attach your equipment to the pole, and then remove the other two poles?
The other, yeah, the other one pole. Yeah, yeah, that's right. Or we would, what we would do is we would harass the ILEC to move their line, because we gotta make sure that they're moved, obviously, before the other pole. Or we could do like a one-touch make-ready situation where a telephone contractor, perhaps we invited him, takes care of all those communication moves.
Before you move into these backyards, and it would be a good idea to notify the electric and RGE and cable TV that you're gonna put a new pole there, and they should get their stuff transferred.
That's all part of the make-ready process. And you just reminded me though, we're not allowed to, RGE will not let us attach to backyard poles. So we have a pole attachment agreement with RGE and Frontier. So we have a pole attachment agreement with RGE and Frontier. One of the stipulations is that the pole needs to be accessible by a bucket truck. So any installation that we are looking to do on a utility pole, 99 times out of 100, it's going to be in the public right-of-way, in the backyard.
Many of our streets, especially, you know, it was built up in the 60s and the 70s, they had the electrics all in the backyard, and we used streetlight only in the front area. I don't know the energy requirements, 4 or 5G installation, but most of them, we had looked at purchasing, it's still kind of in the process of purchasing our streetlight system, but as of now, the street, the poles are all RGE poles, especially where it's streetlight only. They're, they have the right to be within the right-of-way for the transmission of electricity. I'm still trying to figure out, you know, if, if they're allowed to be in the right-of-way for the transmission of electricity, how do they give a right to somebody else that they don't possess themselves? How do they give a right for you to be there for communications if they don't have the right to be there for communications? They have the right to transmit electricity within that right-of-way. It's, you know, I guess I'm trying to wrap my head around that.
Yeah, that's a, that's a great question. So the, the pole attachment tariff that RGE has filed with the Public Service Commission does not allow attachment, it only allows attachments to distribution poles. So as of now, we're trying to negotiate a pole attachment agreement with RGE to attach to streetlight-only poles, but we, we don't have that yet. Something that we're working on. And maybe like a deeper legal question that I, that I don't know the answer to, but utilities can apportion their rights to other attachers, and the Public Service Commission has
But you would argue that they first have to have that right, right? If they don't have the right for, be there to transmit communications, it's only electric, they can't transmit a right that they don't possess themselves.
Yeah, you know, I think I would have to research that a little bit more and get back to you on that.
And believe me, I, if I didn't have a 14-year-old, I wouldn't know how to operate this. And I'm assuming the technologies, carrier-to-carrier are different enough that the equipment can't really be shared. And I might need a plane for this, I was wondering when they brought it up when this is coming on the forefront, and if I can show you. This is kind of what got my attention, I don't know if you can see that real well. I guarantee that's, that's, I don't know where this is, but that's some of the installations that we saw. I guarantee that's not in front of anybody that works for the FCC's house, or anybody that owns or works for a cellular company's house. And I don't think we ought to put it in front of our residents' house either, so I think we started putting this together to try to manage installations.
And I think you've done a good job, you have provisions for, I forget how you define it, stealthing?
Yes. Like the ones in Washington look like they're pretty good, that was in your material here. If people are going to call up and complain how ugly they are on their cellphone, you know, they, using their cellphone, using the 5G to complain that they don't want this anywhere around, but it's the technology that's changing it, but how do you?
You know what, again, and it's certainly within your purview as manager of the right-of-way to have these aesthetic guidelines and whatnot, and you, and you do have, you know, language about stealthing or camouflaging to match the character of the pole. So yeah, there's, there's things that can be done to address something that looks like that picture that you showed.
So Mark, even though my nameplate isn't yours, I'm Don White. I didn't know if that was Jake or how that was dressed, or if I got it wrong. In any event, the issue about that you wanted the small cell facilities to simply be an application for a building permit, that's been discussed many, many times with this board, and they simply don't agree with that. They don't want to have to have either, you know, the code enforcement officer make the decision as to, you know, granting the permit or not, for the reasons like Jake said. Who knows what it's going to look like sitting in front of somebody's house? So they're going to have to come to this board, and the board will decide. And then, and it's the same issue that Jake brought up with, with the right-of-way. If it's a, if it, and I tend to agree with him, although I haven't done a lot of legal research on it. RGE's right-of, you know, their easement, as a utility, as a utility easement, and if you read the easements, it talks about the provision of electricity. Says nothing about, because nobody knew about wireless communications. So I tend to agree with Jake. So if you're going to do, if you're going to put a pole in the public right-of-way, you come to this board, and they'll grant you the easement, they can't deny you. But I, I think you got to do more than just get the permission of RGE to, to stick a new pole in the public right-of-way, or to jump on one of their poles.
Understood.
You know, and you're not going to, I think it would probably be an abuse of discretion for a municipality to just willy-nilly say, "No, we're not going to grant you the easement" because, you know, wireless facilities are considered utilities now, aren't they? And so the municipalities are pretty circumscribed as to how they can regulate, but they at least want you to come before this board, and that thrusts everything on the building inspector.
Yeah, fair enough, and I agree with the
And look at this one, this is only the Village of Webster, it's what, how many square miles, Jake?
2.2.
Huh?
2.2.
2.2. It's not like we're the city of Rochester where you're going to be putting up, you know, thousands of these things, so, you know.
Consideration, yeah.
And we like, we've talked about the idea of the workshop too, and frankly, this board is like, "Look, we just want to pass a local law." This has been hanging around for a long time. And, you know, without due respect, you know, I'm a former Verizon customer, not anymore. But, you know, because that's what people have to do, to get the best deal, you got to can one and go with another one. Otherwise, you're like, "Well, I've been a loyal customer," but you keep raising my rates, you know, but if I'm a new customer, you get such a great deal, it's like, wow.
Kill me back then, is what you're saying.
But, in any event, you know, where's, where's the rest, where's the rest of the wireless carriers?
Good question. Verizon has 50% of the market share in upstate New York, so we are out a bit ahead of the others as far as this goes. So yeah, point taken about coming before the board for special use permit. I do agree with that, somebody made comments in the margins that was posted, and they say, "Just make sure you can do it in a 60-day shot clock." So that's, I'm glad that that's pointed out.
Well, and that's, that's why, that's why this board decided
But if I can leave you with one other thing other than the, so point taken on the special use permit versus building permit, but there's that prohibition.
Well, I understand, I see that, you know, and, and perhaps there should be
I suggest a waiver, some sort of a waiver.
Yeah, well, we can put language in there that, if you have to come in front of the village board, and you can show how it's not possible to have the, the facility outside of 50 feet where all the utilities underground.
Yeah.
They could grant, in essence, a waiver.
Yeah, I'd suggest instead of
They could probably do that, even though, they could probably do it even though it's not expressly set forth in the, in the local law.
Yeah, I didn't know, and not knowing your village code enough, I didn't know if it would fall into like a variance, under like a second variance proceeding or something. But that's why I've seen municipalities add like a waiver provision, so that if there's anything that, not just the 50 feet, but any, anything within this portion of the code that the applicant could request a waiver from, if they can show that it's needed to provide adequate service.
Well, it's subject to the review standards of a special use permit, which I think has the sufficient flexibility.
Okay.
And the reason they wanted it to be in this board and that the zoning board and planning boards is, is those boards only meet once a month, whereas this meets twice a month, so that we can get it, they make it, can make sure that a decision is made within the 60 days.
That's great. Okay. All right, then that's, unless you're up there.
Just to make sure that, how I'm understanding, for maybe everybody's help, these, these things have about a 500-foot radius, if I remember, 5 to 800s, I think it's somewhere there.
I used to say, you know, 5 to 1,200. It, it depends on vegetation, buildings, to probably be a lot of different
Oh, so it's line of sight things?
Yeah, 500 minimum, up to a quarter of a mile radius.
And, you know, each carrier would have to have, obviously, their own installation and their own place, if there's four carriers that are around, essentially, you know, it's, I guess if it's 500 feet, every 125 feet there could be one, or no, excuse me, 250 because it's a radius, not a number. Every 250 feet there could be one of these because, you know, as the system grows out and, you know, we have about 14, 14 miles of road.
I guess, yeah, theoretically, if every, the four major carriers all wanted to cover the village with nothing but small cells, yes. But, you know, the macro network isn't going away.
I'm going to have to ask my 14-year-old what the macro
The top towers.
Oh, okay.
Right out here behind the fire department, that's what we call the macro tower. So the small cells provide, they're not for coverage, they're for capacity. So we'll put them in hotspots where we see a lot of concentrated users, and they're also, if and when Verizon decides to provide 5G under what we call our ultra-wideband millimeter wavelength frequency, the building block of that is small cells. So, but that, but that's not going to be everywhere. The macro network will still exist. Hopefully I explained that well with it.
Yeah, no, I, I think I didn't have two seconds ago, it's helpful. Yeah, I don't get it, if it was up to me, we'd have cans and strings in between us.
All right, well, thank you.
Thank you.
My, my contact information is in the back of that packet if you have any follow-up questions. Look forward to seeing what you do on this.
Thank you.
And what else? Okay, close the public hearing at 7:41. Make the motion to close the public hearing.
I'll make that motion. I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, continuing with board business, resolution approved eight minutes, village board meeting of May 23rd, no chance to review. If so, does anyone have any questions? All right, so ask for a motion to approve the village board meeting of May 23rd.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Trustee Lancey?
Aye.
Trustee Lauer?
Aye.
Trustee Valcay?
Aye.
Trustee Apolito?
Aye.
All right, so we have some budget modifications and transfers. We're transferring from asphalt and lumber 1,0133.29 to sidewalks 1,0133.29. We are also transferring from legal 5,0994 to snow removal personnel. Interfund transfer capital of 1,0871.75 to snow removal personnel, and building maintenance $1,380 to building, village hall equipment. Anyone have any questions on those transfers, comments?
No.
So make a motion, bring a bunch of transfers, or ask for a motion.
I'll make that motion.
Trustee Lauer?
Aye.
Trustee Valcay?
Aye.
Trustee Lancey?
Aye.
Trustee Apolito?
Aye.
All right, resolution for the claims and warrants that I reviewed and signed this evening. I did not have any questions. I believe you also did, probably.
I signed them. What happened to a garage door, Jake?
There was one that the bottom, the rollers kind of froze up on. And it's one that we had, probably the rollers on the bottom, and one, the bottom rail got clipped with a wing. And when that did, everybody, except for one person, knew not to operate that door, and the door came down, and it wasn't supported, and swung out, and then that highlighted the fact that the rollers were stuck and really bad and frozen and turned into a mess.
All right. No other questions?
Thank you.
What was that for an hour, Don, again? CDU charges?
Let's see, one.
First page. 292. It's a 1325 404, there's, so that, I don't know what the CDU, so they handle, typically handle bonds and things of that nature?
Yes, I'm not sure, I can get back to you on that.
Okay.
All right, ask for a motion to, to the claims and warrants.
I'll make that motion.
I second it.
Trustee Lancey?
Aye.
Trustee Lauer?
Aye.
Trustee Valcay?
Aye.
Trustee Apolito?
Aye.
All right, so did everyone get a chance to look at the, read Matt, the agent letter that was sent up to Daryl here?
Yeah, I think that's sensible.
Yeah.
Great thing to do.
Don, you reviewed this, right?
On the, yeah, I already, I looked at that a while ago, and they did make one change to it about the damages that were limited to the cost, they deleted that. So it's, it's fine.
So no questions? Ask for a motion to authorize Heather to sign this, agree?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Trustee Valcay?
Aye.
Trustee Lancey?
Aye.
Trustee Lauer?
Aye.
Trustee Apolito?
Aye.
Motion back.
So discussion is to our possible changes to Section 15641 of village code and potential local law amendment.
Yes, I sent on information, I think it's 2014, I believe, or 15, the board considered a change in local law that we're in Oak Park in, at any time. That was at the end of Kercher Park and at the end of Baker Street. At that time, the proposal of the law included line and drive the entire length, and, and then up Baker Street, I think it was about 150 feet, and up Kercher Park, about 150 feet as well. And then there was a discussion, I believe, letters were sent, it was tabled for 90 days, letters were sent to the neighbors around that area, and it seemed to quiet down for quite a while after the 90 days, and it was no further action was taken. We've had some complaints recently about vehicles being parked down there, it kind of created an hazardous situation, especially Kercher, there's a blind corner when you're coming down there, and if someone's parked right at the end, you got to go around them. You're going right onto the other, you know, to the other lane to get around them, and you can't see until you're there, so I think it's a reasonable request. And so we modified that local law, I think it was yesterday afternoon or
Yeah, the day before.
Where we sent out the information, and it's basically, it's tough to figure out where to measure from or how to define it, so I did the best I could, if you guys want to look at it, let me know. Essentially, it comes back from, we measured from the south edge of the bike path, and then from the edge of the right-of-way to given area. And trying to encompass now this little L shapes or J shapes around the corner, so you're basically back up, I think it's about 50 feet from the corner on, on the one, which is essentially to the first driveway on each side. So, you're basically back off, I think it's about 50 feet from the corner on, on the one, which is essentially to the first driveway on each side. And then around the corner, even with the depth of those lots, that create no parking zones so that there's not somebody right on the corner there, especially where Daryl's down. It's consistent, kind of on each end, there's varying dimensions because of the way the road is and the way things turn. But the idea is the same, it's just going up and making no parking on each end of the road path, so.
No, absolutely makes sense, I know, I talked to you on the phone, I think, I tracked you through that the other day.
Yeah.
And with the much smaller than the fire truck, kind of, it's very difficult. It's almost parked right at the, right before you turn, so it was difficult. So, I would agree with you that I think that makes sense.
So, if we could, like, request something was on the agenda for the next meeting to consider the, the legal notice. And then, send for a public hearing and then, I guess, we'll go.
Makes sense, Sarah, did you vote that?
Yes.
Right.
And I think I included that too on the email, so, and I just sold the legal notice from last time, so hopefully the laws didn't change and it should be good still. Yes.
All right, anyone have any comments about that?
I agree with that.
No, good.
All right, so, what we're looking for now is an ask for a motion to authorize Heather to sign for a treasurer consulting agreement to work with Tim Hungerford to handle bookkeeping until a treasurer is hired.
Yes.
So, everyone had a chance to look that over and... Does anyone have any questions about this?
Did the, the cancellation provision, was it?
Yes, 30 days.
Pardon me?
Add, add up to 30 days.
Oh, I thought it was going to be 10.
He's took your advice, it'll be 30.
That wasn't advice, I put a question mark for 30 days.
I mean, that's typical 30, right?
The shorter the, from, from my perspective and the village's perspective, the shorter the better, but...
Yes.
True. But you can also initiate that kind of really, like, we don't.
Because I don't...
He obviously was fine with anything, he doesn't...
You guys want to...
I don't, I don't know what the, what the expected duration of his service is, is going to be and... If it's 30 days, you may end up having him around longer than you really need.
I don't think so, because even when we do get someone, I'd like to keep him on as, like, a one-day-a-month kind of thing, just to double check. And he also included that in here, he said the first couple of weeks, it'd be about 16 to 20 hours. And then go down to about 6 to 16, and we're actually looking into letting him go remotely as well, into Accufund, our new program, so.
As long as you factored all this into your budget for both the treasurer and now this new service.
Yes, we've got both.
Because you're going to eventually have both.
Right, and I don't, I don't think we need to have, I don't think we need to have both.
Yeah.
So, that's something I was talking about.
Well, it's all treasures. As a legal matter, the village has to have a treasurer.
Correct. But we don't have to have them both at the same time. And, and...
No, you have to have a treasurer.
Correct.
At all times.
Correct.
And so, there's going to be a training period.
That's not what I said, though.
There'll be a training period, right? For our new treasurer.
No, what, I understood Heather to say, even when you get a treasurer, you're still going to want to keep this person on once a month or something like that. Which is fine.
Which is fine, but Heather will be, Heather will make the decisions of order and serve.
I understand, I understand.
So, that's all, that's all the same.
I understand that, and just when you, because this obviously wasn't part of the budget process.
Understand, understand.
So, for the first year, you're going to have to just...
And we also have to remember, you don't, you don't know who's that.
How it works is working out.
You don't know who that candidate may be, there may be no training required, so...
That's true.
So, we just have to see what goes in.
Right, so you, you don't, you don't know what the salary is going to be.
If I could interject, the training is for me, actually, he's going to be training me. And once we get the new treasurer, we'll have Fred Maxick do that training, so there wouldn't, that's already included in what they do.
Can I just, it said the word hired, could you maybe make it the word pointed?
Yes, we don't take comments from the crowd, but yes.
Yes.
Well, the resolution is supposed to be to authorize someone, deputy mayor or...
So, this would be hiring.
To simply sign the...
Contract.
The treasurer, the consulting agreement.
So, this would be a hire?
Yes.
Or a contract? But as we talk about...
It's the N word that I was worried about.
Yeah, it's not, it's not, it's not a hire, it's just authorizing...
Future employment.
It's authorizing to enter into this consulting agreement with Timothy Hungerford and HV Audit LLC. Or no, H, what is the name, HV Audit Hungerford Vinton LLC, is that their full name?
HB, HB Audit.
But then they got, so is it HV Audit LLC? What's the Hungerford?
So, does it, um...
Okay, it's Hungerford Vinton LLC.
So, is that the board, you guys comfortable with the 30 days or do you want to push back? June?
What?
Do you want to push back and make it a shorter termination notice, or are you guys okay with 30 days?
I think 30 days.
I, I really do.
Okay.
I don't think it should be shorter than that.
I mean...
Very good.
Can we change our mind, we have to respect her. I mean, right now, we've got to pay both, we don't, we've got to do it.
All right, so, Don, if you have any more questions?
Nope.
No?
Okay.
All right, so I'm going to ask for a motion then for, for Heather to sign this. So, we are, have someone in place for the time being, which is important.
I'll second it.
Trustee Lauer?
Aye.
Trustee Lancey?
Aye.
Trustee Valcay?
Aye.
Trustee Apolito?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Looks like you're up again, Don.
Well, I have nothing, because I've probably said too much already, so.
No, no, absolutely not.
No, no, we'd much rather listen.
No, really, no. I really don't have any.
Okay.
Other than Jake has some, you know, things in the works with the family, maybe doing something with that circle on Kittleburg and Park and stuff.
Yes.
That we've been talking about. Would you like...
I went down there, I drove around down there and took a look.
Is that our property? By operation of law, it is.
Good job.
By, by, by...
Whole street is a descriptive easement, not the whole, well... It's a whole, whole park area.
Part, part of the street was formerly dedicated, actually, the whole street, it's just, this was like a, a gap that got left out because of the financial issues of the original developer, what happened to the original developer.
Yeah.
But according to, was it 6-608?
626, I think.
6-626 of the New York Village Law. The village can claim ownership by prescription if it's been used as a public street or road for at least 10 years, which this has. So, you don't need formal dedication papers, because there's no one to get formal dedication papers from. And the village has been plowing it and doing some maintenance of it. The public obviously has been using it.
Right. Unhappily.
While it's present state, and it's...
So, the complaints, neighbors don't want to see the school bus fall into the paddles?
I guess part, part of the issue was that, like Stans said, it was never properly, it was never offered for dedication and it was never completed, even if it was. And the village is prohibited from working on property that isn't ours and, and, you know, we've kind of become the bad bank, because we've been doing minimal maintenance on it. We did have an overlay, we had an easement on that for a turnaround since about the 60s when Kittleburg and Park used to just dead end there. So, we've had an easement there, and that's what we've been operating under that easement, and we plow it, so we can turn around there and keep coming out and plow. But in reality, it was never offered for dedication, it was never completed, the county, you know, somewhere in the maps, it was, and the subdivision map setting was to be dedicated to the village. But no one ever checked to see if it actually was before they filed or finalized the maps. Apparently, a title search company or whoever did that work didn't find out, track it back. The person who was a referee for, when I went into receivership, didn't prove, that research didn't know that. So, along this whole line, the village is the first ones that were doing their jobs and, you know, we're lucky I scored, I guess. But the reality is now, it's a 10-year time period, like Don said, so, and, you know, it was put in in 2009, so now it's been 10 years. So, now, and we've got plans, I want to try to talk with the property maintenance company for the, the Morgan development that's there and homeowners association for the other developments there, and make improvements to the circle, not just, you know, pave it. I think that there's certainly some issues with three streets coming in, and maybe make an improvement there and get ownership out and buy in. I'd love to put a raised median in there, work with those communities, the homeowners association and the other, and see if they work together in doing plantings in there or beautification of it. And then we can maintain, you know, the outside there, you know, like we do, it's a public street at that point, plow it, but improve the traffic flow around there too. Because right now, it's the Wild West, you go down there and people can go from any direction, there's nothing to control it. Maybe that's a function of it being a private street at the time, but there's nothing to control where everybody knows. It's like, you know, the people are cut across the parking lots at the grocery store or something that won't drive down the lanes, it's, it's kind of crazy. So, we're looking at making those improvements, I want to have that conversation pretty quickly with, with those interested parties and the stakeholders and see if we can work together, make a good improvement down there. I don't think we're going to pony up any money for the road itself, but if we can set it up so they can make other improvements to it, that'd be a win for everybody.
Agreed. Um, Heather?
So, I just had one thing. We, as you probably know, the state has mandated new sexual harassment training. And I went through a couple of companies to see how best to do that, either have someone come out and do the training or we, I found this company that is certified and can give us a one-time fee, video that they make for, it's at a cost of $500. And we get to use it forever and we can do the training right here, and we wouldn't have to have someone else come out. I definitely feel more comfortable having someone make the video. There are videos online that are free, however, you have to be interactive. And I think it would just be easier if we had another company handle the video, that it's an actual interactive video. So, just wanted to let you know.
Very good. I was trying to think of, I got another one too for you to check out.
Oh, great, thank you.
B R. So, they do, that's what we use. Probably it's...
Oh, that's right, we use it.
So, everyone can do it online.
Thank you.
Part of the news you're taking.
You know the cost of stuff?
I, I don't, I don't manage that piece of it, but...
Okay.
That was really nice.
And if, if it's something where that, we can do it online or, because a major, it has to be done by October, after, and then you have to do it every single year. And I have to monitor who exactly is, is there and everything. And, you know, it is difficult with the guys in the back is in terms of how busy they are. So, if we had our own video or something that they can do online, then we wouldn't have to schedule someone to come out here and do it. And then it would be easier for Jake and I to coordinate when we want to do it. So, and then if we have anyone new come in, maybe we just sit and watch the video on a laptop as they're filling out paperwork.
What's nice about that, B R, they have different levels as well, so the frontline staff will take something a little bit different than a supervisor or another level, so...
It doesn't break it down like that, so that's...
You should have more responsibility for your supervisor around these type of things, so.
Okay, thank you. I will look into that. Of course, Jake wanted to teach it, but...
It was available, it was kind of lying for free for the state, made it for old, but, but I'm trying to make sure I get a little lot during this, so maybe it's not a good, good thing for me to do anyway.
Well, Jake, it looks like one of the time. No, you're, you're...
Service part, the gutters are in, we're going to start on the monsoon, gutters are in on the east side, and we did a little section of Champion Avenue. We're going to start working on the other, on the west side here pretty soon. Neighbor's been great, and everybody's been understanding, the contractors, everybody's worked together really well. Contractors, you know, the monsoon season that we've had here has really goofed their schedule up. They were still able to get us in, Clancy's just working his butt off, getting it prepped and ready. We expected it to be delayed a couple of weeks, but it came down to the original scheduled timing, we literally found out like three days before. We, you know, we were going, working on it, all the guys said, you know, like, did you now or jump into another job, it's going to be three weeks later. You know, we don't want to leave people's driveways and mounds and stuff torn up that long, if we can do anything to prevent it. So, all the guys, you know, really worked real hard and got everything prepped and ready to go and allowed the company to come in on the schedule. So, I thank them and thank the neighbors and their patience and, you know, I didn't have to chase one car down, everybody moved their vehicles out of the way and we were ready to work in the morning, and it's very helpful and hopefully they like the, the final result when we're all done, like we did this summer, so. But I would thank everybody again. Just a couple of signs, I sent on an email too, we've gotten requests for retired street signs. And it's been, we've been hitting them for a couple of years, and I always mean to try to put it on the, I always make a note to put it on the fee schedule. We basically, before we can get rid of an asset, I mean, an asset, usually we just scrap those. I think it'd be great if we had some sort of a fee, you know, down the hole, if it's $5, and then that would help manage the, you know, if we have retired street signs. I'm talking about street name signs. We can say, here's what we have if somebody calls up, because probably six or eight times a year, at least, I get thousands of people looking to, looking to do that, see if maybe their kids moved away, they want to get the street they grew up on or something like that. So, if we could, you know, if it's $5 a sign, you know, that would help, you got to process the payment then upfront. We have to just have a spreadsheet, a little Excel spreadsheet or something where you can manage our inventory as it's rotating through. We'd also, I'd like to have some sort of stamp or a sensor or something we could mark the deck with so that somebody had one of these signs, knowing, if you had a time that, A, you know, you went out and took it off there or something, that, you know, this is one that was, you know, taken out of service and, and available for sale. So, I don't know the process for, if it's something they can go on the next meeting or if it's something just a simple resolution or vote to add, you know, retired street signs to the fee schedule for $5, I'll be sitting in the scrapyard, you can probably eat a quarter for them if you're...
Exactly.
They're, if you're really, really generous at the scrapyard, they're, they're probably a couple of pounds apiece and, you know, they're 10, they're three and a half, four signs maybe. It's not a lot of money that you'd get for the scrap, you know, and we don't, we wouldn't drive just...
Do you have that in the warranty?
Yeah, it's in warranty, that's next April. But we have, we just passed a fee schedule over.
It just, it just happens that, like, we'll also pass it again.
Oh, yeah.
If there's a change, it's kind of silly, but...
Yeah, so whatever process that, that would take, if we can, we can do that.
Yeah, they'll be the little ones, though, so.
Yeah, I, I plan on buying some myself, so, and if you need, so.
No discount?
No, I wouldn't expect any discount. So, whatever we can do to make that happen, that'd be marvelous. And I'm also going to try to, with this new budget year, one of the things we talked about is replacing W15. That's the truck, the, one of the smaller one, smaller of the dump trucks there, so we're getting quotes for the truck. Some of the models that are on state bid, or not state bid, excuse me, these different county bids, they're almost built out already because a lot of budget years started in January, a lot of the purchasers. There's things now, some of the big, one of the big three manufacturers you can't even get. Right now, they're 2020, or excuse me, 2021 vehicles that you end up trying to put in the bill cheap for now. If you recall, a couple of years ago, we bought one of those 750s, we put it in in June and we got it in March. So, there's an ability to get some of these, or one of the trucks now, so we're looking at that with a landscape box on the back of it. They're certainly not cheap, but, you know, we'd be, gave rid of the, the W15, which a couple of years ago, we had an electrical, it was outside and there, some wires started on fire and the guys put it out and I yelled at them, because I think it would have worked out better for us the other way, but... So, it's, we've got our money's worth out of that one, for sure. It gets, it gets used and abused and it's, it's time to, time to get it replaced. So, I'm, I'm sure at the next meeting, if we're authorization, signing agreement, and it's going to be on either... it's gonna be on either, on a county bid or the, or not a county bid, that they're on. I have the piggyback provisions that clause written into them, so that's how the trucks is, it's better and more streamlined process than the state bid system, so...
Thank you.
And that's it.
Yep. Thank you.
All right, so anyone have anything else? Our next village board meeting will be June twenty-seventh.
Again, that's, uh, right for Daryl there, and he hasn't been served on Monday.
I've got any more to do.
Oh, chair.
It's not my, I did talk to one of our jobs every week, or the other week, I guess it is, when, just put out the sign for the band concerts. They started this evening. Bon Nature didn't cooperate, so they were down at Cherry Ridge, but those, the season has started now, so I might talk to Tom. And whenever there's a change or weather like that, they have it on their, they have Facebook page and I think on Instagram or something that people that are interested can, can look at or like or friend or subscribe or whatever it is.
It still gives two, uh, twenty eighteen dates.
No, on our website, it has a link to the, the Village Band that has a twenty nineteen schedule, but I think...
The bid doesn't go.
What's that?
No, you go ahead. The bid, the bid doesn't, uh...
Oh, the bid...
There's, there's, it's not updated.
I think the, the band itself has the, it's the, it's the Village Band concerts, not the bid concerts. So the Village Band has a Facebook page of their own, and I asked, I called Tom, the, about Tom Indiana today, and said, hey, are you guys moving to Cherry Ridge? He goes, yeah, we're moving. We discussed notification on that. Can I let him know upfront? But also, he says that they put it on their Facebook page, said, hey, it's moving.
All right. Ask for a motion. Who's the...
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, everyone.
And thank you.